Um, cancel the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one is under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can sit here, trustee, prepare the details. I'll go in for three. Second, approve the March third, twenty twenty five village board meeting. And to file the January fourteenth, twenty twenty five public safety committee. The February third, twenty twenty five finance and personnel committee. February tenth, Board of Public Works. The February twelfth, Architectural Review Board, minute as presented. Both approve and file. Second. Motion and second, any changes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Persons request may be heard. All members of the public are welcome to address the village board. Um, just for any action or discussion we assume. If they wish to speak to the board at this time. On to office and present the president. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody on your left hand, right, right, the inside of the board. And this will be our final board meetings this side, ending the election. Everybody for the great year that we had. Uh, Mary Pat's retiring from Grafton. So I'd like to thank her by giving her the official mayor of. Nightmare before Christmas, that sound best. And Julia, just keep in mind that we really appreciate it. There was a smiley face and a frowning face. Ian's face is a smiley face, but if you turn his head, it's a frowning face. Well, we really appreciate that you were able to be on the board for two years and we appreciate that. And and gentlemen, best gentlemen, best of luck to you in the elections. What I have at this point, uh, we'll go on to, uh, item number six, which is resolution ordinance action minimums. Consideration of an extension for the twenty twenty four impact be scheduled April ninth, twenty twenty five for H Knox Development.
Absolutely. I'd like to start off this evening's agenda by making it easy. Uh, and conversations with the developer, um, he has actually requested to withdraw, um, his request.
Very good. Being withdrawn, we'll move to the report of finance and personnel committee. That people do, I will only excuse the upcoming issues from Ozaki County Highway Department for upper lower parking lot project for line kiln park. At a cost not to exceed one hundred fifty six thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars to be funded by ARPA fund. And a combination of available fund balance from the park and open space and fund and general fund, Jesse.
That's absolutely correct. The, the, uh, motion, uh, requested is all encompassing. This is the project that will utilize the remainder of our ARPA funds. But then also, um, due to the cost estimate, uh, provided by Ozaki County Highway Department. We will look to augment, uh, those funding, uh, just a bit from those other sources that were identified. In an amount not to exceed one fifty six, that one hundred fifty six thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. Uh, this is coming forward with the unanimous recommendation.
Motion and second, please. Very good. Thank you. Um, any, Dave, you have any questions?
Thank you.
Anyone else? Andrew.
I just want to start about it, Andrew. Um, I know that last year we contracted Ozaki County to do the. I'll call it the lower parking lot because how it's defined is the upper lower. So the regular parking lot by the song pavilion. Are we going to get kicked out of their schedule again? Or are we locked into their schedule somehow at this point in time?
You're in the end B, so make final decisions tonight. But yes, we should be, we thought they would be, uh, like end of May or early June.
Could you speak a little louder or tell us into the handle? I'm so sorry.
Yes, it's not officially on Ozaki County's schedule until you have the final approval tonight. But it is placed potentially in their schedule right now at the end of May or early June.
Here. That motion carries. Look to Board of Public Works.
I'm here.
Twenty twenty four stormwater report.
Yes, this is, um, pardon the term, but a housekeeping issue whereby we prepare. The village prepares an annual report with regards to all of its activities pertaining to stormwater management. Um, albeit, uh, street sweeping, um, condition of the ponds, et cetera. Um, that said, we need formal approval of this report by the village board in order to submit it to the B and R. So that action is before the village board this evening.
Motion and second, please.
I'll make the motion.
Very good. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Um, carries. Look for number two, award project twenty five dash O three, twenty twenty five street and utility improvement project to vent construction. Two rivers, Wisconsin, for a contract cost not to exceed two million, five hundred eight thousand, four hundred forty five dollars and forty cents. With the real reallocation of fifty thousand dollars from the sidewalk project to be authorized to use by staff as necessary.
Yes, uh, the reason for the reallocation of the sidewalk, uh, funds. Is due to the fact that the lowest bid being vent and construction came in over the engineer's estimate. Therefore, that allocate, reallocation of sidewalk dollars will not only cover the bid overage. But also provide a small bit of contingency, um, to be able to carry out this project in a timely manner. Um, that said, the bids were vetted at Board of Public Works and come forward with a recommendation for approval.
Very good. Bring it to the table for discussion. If I can, motion and second.
Make a motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jim and Dave. Any questions by Jim and Dave on this? Questions here? All right, seeing none, hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries. Move on to approving the purchase.
Pardon me, President Delort, just to make a point, uh, as I want to recognize, uh, trustee Harbeck via Zoom, uh, her vote was nay.
Nay?
Yes, thank you.
About eighty-six to one. Thank you very much. Approved the purchase of a new twenty twenty four Ford F three fifty gas truck with valve utility body installed by Badger Truck and Auto Group for a price not to exceed forty eight thousand, two hundred seventy six dollars.
This is a budgeted capital expense, uh, for the utility, uh, for a replacement vehicle.
Very good. Take a motion and second, bring it to the table.
I'll make the motion.
Very good. Thank you, Dave, Amy, Dave and Amy, any questions? Lisa, any questions?
No, no questions. Thanks.
Very good. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then motion carries. Uh, final for the Board of Public Works here, approve the purchase of a new AX zero four zero dash four R three mini excavator with buckets from John P. Loken, uh, company in Bluebird, Wisconsin. For a price not to exceed sixty two thousand, two hundred fifty eight dollars and thirty two cents. Motion and second, or Jesse, do you need to say anything about?
Uh, very quickly, it is a budgeted capital expense for our utility. Uh, this would be a mini excavator that could be shared between utility and DPW. We currently have one full size excavator, um, owned and housed at the, um, Public Works. However, there are times such as catch basin repair where a smaller machine just makes a lot more sense. And, um, makes it much more feasible to carry out the repairs. Therefore, the mini excavator was specked out. Again, uh, it is a budgeted expense is coming forward with a recommendation for approval. Correct.
Thank you, Dave. The questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. All right, let's go on to the, uh, report of public safety committee. Uh, number one ordinance. Ten dash U O four and ten dash four four. Out of the village code which adopts by reference state law provisions to enforce ATV, UTV and OHM violations of municipal. Jesse?
Yes, currently, um, well citations can be written in the village, they need to go to circuit court. Um, for adjudication, this would allow for everything to be handled on a municipal level with regards to any, um, citations. Uh, with the, uh, um, machine machinery, uh, or vehicles noted, um, being ATVs, UTVs, et cetera. Um, so we are looking to amend the code. This is coming forward with a recommendation to approve.
Very good. Motion and second, bring it to the table for discussion. Very good. Motion and second, any discussion on this from our two folks here? No, uh, chief, I have a question. Appreciate it. Come to the handle. So, um, as I understand this, this is, uh, really to, um, enforce the provision that we do not want ATV, UHVs, OHMs on, uh, village streets, correct?
Yeah, this gives us the ability, if we do have those vehicles that we are seeing operated on them on the city streets. Uh, to give us the opportunity to charge them municipally as opposed to going to certain.
Very good. And you know, I understand I did, I did some research on this. It seems that, uh, um, that ATV, TV and other, um, off road vehicles can be operated on on a highway without insurance, correct?
I'm pretty sure that they don't.
Yeah, and and also that it's a safety issue as well, correct? Okay, very good. All right, we have a motion and second. Thank you very much. Any further questions for chief? All right, motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And motion carries. Uh, prove the acceptance of a donation of two gift cards totaling sixty dollars as well as cash donation of two dollars to the Grafton Police Department. Jesse, is this a political donation?
Yes, uh, standing with, uh, a policy that's currently in place. Um, as the village board has, uh, discussed very briefly, a replacement, uh, policy is in the works as far as crafting. The ability to administratively accept small donations like this. But our current language does remain in effect, therefore, the village board must, um, formally accept these donations.
Very good. Motion and second, please.
A second.
Very good. Any questions from you two? Any questions from the rest of the board? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. To talk about the off duty management, I know there's been a lot of interest in that from what I hear. Uh, and we'll look to, uh, actually the motion will be to approve which chief to work on off duty management to manage the police department's off duty officer program.
Absolutely. Um, to be very clear, what this would do was simply would simply authorize Chief Capanera to conduct further due diligence. There are internal administrative logistics and to be need to be worked out. There are internal logistics that need to be worked out within the police department as in, um, through, uh, because of the collective bargaining agreement. But then also the, uh, logistics as far as a policy level with the board. How would this apply to their, all of the different events that we have here in the community? There are some events that are directly related to celebrate Grafton, who are we are very close partners with, similarly with the Chamber of Commerce. There are other outside entities that come in and hold events here in the village. So it would be a matter of how would this, how could this service apply to the different events? But the big thing is right now, tonight, all this action will do is simply. Gauge the board's interest. Yep. Are you okay with chief doing some additional due diligence and coming back? Or no, are we done talking about this right here and now? So that is all this action item is here, uh, on the agenda for this evening. Um, chief is here this evening to be able to speak in greater detail about, um, the service. Um, and it is coming from the committee for board consideration.
Very good. Just so, um, we're also very ultimately clear here, um, this will not, the decision on. Who gets charged for this, et cetera, et cetera, will be left to future board discussion. It will not be implemented before it comes back to the new board, correct?
Correct. This is a, that would be a separate and distinct action by the board because that would be a policy decision. Uh, moreover, this action here this evening does not place us in a service contract with off duty management. This, this, uh, action item here today evening, again, is simply to authorize chief to do more due diligence. And really start looking at and determining the internal logistics of it. And then the policy matters that accompany with this before we could even get into a service contract. So there are multiple steps that actually have to come back to the village board for consideration. This is simply a go or no go point right now with regards to due diligence.
Very good. Thank you for that explanation. I'll look for a motion and second to bring it to the table for the specific discussion.
I will make the motion.
I will second.
I agree with your motion and second. Dave, Mary Pat, any questions you have on this, uh, concerns?
No concerns.
Mary Pat?
Um, no concerns and and as, um, my, my actual concerns were who are we going to charge? We don't want to be that community that nobody wants to come to events at because we're charging for the police service. So it's, it's going to be based on who we're going to charge and who we're going to, um. To come into the community without charging.
Very good. We'll just go down.
Uh, yeah. This came to the board a number of years ago, correct, chief?
Chief, come up to the handle, please. And I don't know, Jesse, is this a question you want to handle, um, that just came back up or?
Um, no, it's a pretty straightforward. It's, as chief mentioned on his walk up, uh, did come forward to the board in twenty twenty one. At that point in time, the most significant concern was due to the fact off duty management as a company, as a service, did not have a presence in Wisconsin at all at that time. That was the primary, um, concern that I recall, but it's been some time. But so Mr. Miller, your, your question, yes, it did come before the board a while ago. It is coming back, um, here this evening. And chief, correct me if I'm wrong, primarily because that main concern of not having a presence here in Wisconsin. Is in fact been rectified as the city of Green Bay. Um, has and is using off duty management, so therefore it is brought back. But again, this is about authorizing due diligence at this time, not the contract itself.
So I oppose it. Twenty twenty one is that correct date?
Uh, twenty one is when it came forward the first time, yeah.
They can be doing the. Be comfortable, nice guy. Somebody's going to get.
Yeah, so they do charge the fee to the vendor or to the person who's requesting services. And it's all paid from the backend through them. It's included in, in the entire cost of the officer when the officer comes to work. Um, they're requesting. I don't know specifically what the fee is, um, but, um. You know, there is a problem.
And my, my other concern is if this is such a nice setup, how come it's Green Bay and nobody else?
Well, off duty management is fairly new to the north. Uh, and this area out here, and they're very heavily used down in the south. Um, and, um, I did a little more research on them after our public safety, um, meetings. Question came up to where they're located. They are located in Katy, Texas, um, which would. Really probably show why they have such a heavy presence down in the southern area of the United States. Um, as well as they have a lot of, um, out in the Colorado area as well, um, in the western side, California and. So they're just trying to make their way up this way, just like any new company that comes into our market. If there's an, an area where they're not. Happy to yet, they're, they're trying to make their way in. Green Bay was the one that, um. Got signed up with them first, uh, and they, um. Been enjoying their services and granted, I'll, uh, give you this, Green Bay is much bigger than us. Uh, and they have a lot more events with the Packers and and all the stuff that's going on up there. But, um, it has been. It helped significantly reduce their staffing time that they have to do for, um, computing management.
And one more thing, my concern is the cost of this. OEM is going to get passed down. To businesses in the village.
Right.
And for the businesses. To recoup that, they're going to have to charge more.
Well, that's probably a business decision. I don't know how they, how they've worked on that. Um, but what I can tell you is that we spend a significant amount of hours in off duty work through the department with the, the events that come up. With people asking for security details and special events, um, that aren't even hosted by the village. Um, so it, it does, those are public dollars being used for private businesses, um, to provide them with security services. So this is a, um, vehicle for us to recover some of that money that we're spending out. Um, so without going into a lot of great detail, um. It's a lot easier for them to go on to our website, use this link and sign up to request an officer. If an officer doesn't want to work it, then they don't work it. If there's nobody to work it, then they're going to have to find an alternative way of providing security for their events. So it's not like it is now where somebody comes to me and says, hey, I want to secure, I want police officer or two to provide security. And if nobody volunteers for it, then I got to force somebody to come in and do it. Where we go through this program here and if it's something that is not really sponsored. We don't have to pay for it.
Well, this did come forward to public safety and we were satisfied with the information that was supplied by chief. To go ahead and approve this, knowing two, two things that we were authorizing him to come forward to supply more information. And we wanted it to come to village board so we could get more info from everybody. So knowing that you're going to go back and get us more information, um, give us a presentation, uh, we felt that public safety, we were approving it, um, for those reasons.
Thank you, Amy. Andy?
Um, I, I feel that this is a little bit, uh, cart before the horse. Uh, we currently don't have a policy for, uh, charging based on events. Are there any businesses in Grafton that utilize police officers as a security detail at this point in time, just a business?
Uh, Capco. Capco has used us for security, uh, details.
We're very business. Okay. Um, so, you know, I look at, I look at, we don't have a policy of who makes the determination of the what, when, how and why that security would be required. And because there, I don't see it as an overwhelming amount. Uh, and now, you know, if I had a policy in place that I can see that. We're going to utilize these services ten times a year, then you are going to have to be scared of people. Um, and it's for outside entities. Uh, I have an issue with the fact that the businesses in town do pay taxes, just like I do, for services. And, uh, I think that they, that is part of their taxation, if you will, that. If they request an officer for a specific reason and you see it as a valid reason, you're going to get. So I don't feel like we need to move forward this at this time.
Thank you, Amy. Lisa?
Uh, sure. Thank you. Um, I don't, I don't really believe that our local businesses should be footing this bill. Um, I think that the small amount of profit margin that they do make is going to be cut significantly. Um, I do know that chief said, you know, we don't have a policy yet to figure out who's going to get charged or who isn't. Um, but today I did speak with the, uh, Green Bay Police Department Assistant Chief Kevin Warrock. He is, he notes that they've used it for about a year. Um, they have a lot of overtime in Green Bay. Uh, the police officers mostly sign up for all their overtime on their police department website. It's easier. Um, Assistant Chief said that the, um, off duty management app is a little cumbersome. It's a little difficult to navigate. They only have a couple items out there on that, on that, uh, app for officers to, to, um, click on to. Um, but he also said that, um, it's, you know, it is. It's, it's not beneficial to some of the small local businesses. Um, so he also feels bad for some of the small businesses. Um, so they don't necessarily use this much in, in Green Bay right now. Um, so I, my option is that. I think we talked about this in the past and I'm good with, um, not utilizing this because I feel like we need to be, um, a little more fair with our small businesses.
Anything else?
No, nothing for me.
Thank you. Great, uh, if I, if I made one thing, and, and I get, we have a lot of small businesses, but the small businesses aren't the ones that are asking. It's, um, the box stores that I'm more concerned about, our home depots, armed, old, Costco, those kind of things. Those are what's, um, we're focused on. That's where I take it. So a quick question here, chief, um, so do you have an online system for your officer to sign up for overtime? Okay, so, um, concerns that we have that their system might be too cumbersome, are you concerned with that? I'm not. As with any new piece of technology, there's going to be some challenges that come along with it. It's just a matter of getting used to it. Uh, we do have a scheduling software where we push things through our scheduling software. Um, but that's mainly for like open shifts and overtime that's generated from, uh, an officer calling in sick or whatnot. Um, we do use it for, um, posting events and off duty work like that to that. Um, but again, that's a matter of our, um. Staff having to deal with that, so it's just a question, just the way that you don't have to. What is the budgetary impact that this would have on the police department budget if the overtime, uh, just an estimate on what we might be able to save and we forward with this? I'd have to give you some numbers. I don't know. Um, I can tell you like our, our Euro event usually costs us about four, seven thousand, depending on how many officers I have working.
President Delort, uh, trustee Harbeck may have a question?
Oh, no, sorry, Jesse. I'm, I'm fine.
But no, my apologies. I thought I saw, uh, trustee Harbeck raise her hand. My fault.
I'm having trouble hearing.
Well, this is going to be quite true. Because I think that hearing the board is, you know, you have small businesses that pay for it, then people pay for it. You're saying our businesses that we have volunteer organizations such as, you know, the Lions, the American Legion. We have, I mean, and I kind of heard, kind of what I'm hearing here is celebrate Grafton. It may be probably be, um, set aside from this as it's a, it's an event. But I think one meeting forward on this, if this does pass tonight, then we have to come up with some very good guidance that are going to work for the whole community. Because I believe the future boards will probably, um, not agree with it. So. Yeah, you know, we can get a policy from the city of Cedarburg, uh, because they do charge, they charge us as well. So, uh, for the four years of high parades or the, um, holidays parade, they do charge for their, their personnel. And so if there's something that we want to do, we can follow our policy that maybe Cedarburg has already created and organized. All right, very good. Everybody's had their say and if there are questions on this, we bring it to the board. So we have a motion here to approve, uh, police chief to work with off duty management to manage the police department's off duty officer program. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Nay. Trustee Harbeck is a nay.
Four to three, moving forward. All right, on the next group, please, uh, chief of police to purchase a law enforcement drone for an amount not to exceed thirteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty six thousand dollars, which includes training.
Yes, this is a budgeted, uh, capital purchase, um, and the training is also budgeted, uh, coming forward with the recommendation from committee.
Very good. All in favor, uh, please, chief of police to purchase this drone, uh, thirteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty six dollars, which includes training.
I'll second.
Very good. Glad to hear from our public safety committee. If there's any questions. No, there isn't. Andy?
Uh, chief, I have a thought. Um, I, in the, in your, I have to, I didn't see like any competitive bidding. It's just this particular vendor, who is the vendor that we're getting at?
Uh, remember that's who we're getting it from is out of random. That they are a, uh, they're on a government state contract with the GSA. Uh, do you know if their, um, equipment is in compliance with the National Defense Organization? Matt, are you familiar with that? Okay, so what that is, um, the government is trying to avoid using Chinese equipment. Because some of the components in drones, uh, obviously manufacturer puts it together with various components. Uh, the camera portions of it and the transmission portions of it can be intercepted. And, uh, they will be, if, if that equipment, they can't prove that they actually see that that is compliant. Uh, later this year, the N D A shut it completely down, so in fact, uh, like DJI drones are on board, they won't be operating. Because they're not compliant, so I have a concern with that. And my, my other question is, are you committing, um. Having your operation be compliant with, uh, the federal air regulations or are you just doing it in your? Yeah, no, there's going to be all my drone pilots will be part of the seven sort of five three, okay, any, thank you. Very good. Lisa?
No questions. Thank you.
Questions? The, the first couple of seconds that you come in, I have to be a lit reader, Lisa, because the mic doesn't pick you up. So if I see no questions, good. So, thanks, Amy.
I'd like to mention one of our committee members, Steve Coe, is.
I'd like to mention one of our committee members, Steve Coe, is a drone pilot and was familiar with what chief was looking at profit-wise and he did, he did approve it.
Okay, very good. What you did.
Well, we do have a use for a drone currently. Do we have to go to other departments and do they then charge us to use their equipment or bring in an officer that is trained for this type of?
Uh, they do have county has a drone operator also. For all of our special events, um, to have, um, Skywatch big. Um, so, yeah, we
Thank you. I, I, I really like having somebody who has experience with the FAA on the board. Really just a different deal. Um, I think that's a, a strong question.
I agree. I So I don't, I don't know where these drones are made. I know on a vague account, out of ramai is a made in the USA group, and I know DJI or DJI is probably offshore as well, like everything hopefully out here. Um, but I'm not sure what parts they use or where.
Yeah, I, the DJI, I'm happy I do, but I'm sure it sends everything back to, to China, just to keep, like, today. Yeah, exactly. I'm being, I'm being, I'm sorry, had to put that in. But I think, um, you know, I think that's a great question, you know, if anything funny, Andy, and I'm, I'm thinking that, um, you know, if we look at, you know, look to Mike, our, our commentary on this, um, to be able to say if, um, that question needs to be answered before the ultimate purchase is made. Um, is that something we could change the movement, uh, motion to?
You could, uh, make the motion contingent upon verification of the, the chief's verification of the concern. And then I guess if, if you discover that, uh, the concern is warranted, chief, the issue might have to come back.
Yeah, no, I have no problem checking in on that and now it's been before. Um, and certainly if, I mean, DJI, DJI is a big drone maker for military and law enforcement. Um, I will look into that and see what their, um, when they get their parts.
Well, I think the, I guess, clients with, um, Andy said, Andy, I think you can send me or I would suggest, not to Jesse, the, um, uh, the environment, if you know, if you could send that to, you know, um, if everybody could be okay with this, or to Amy and Mary Pat, if I just
It's true, sure. Yeah, the, the NDA, it's, it, it, it has to do with Chinese components that they're aware of. And that, uh, DJI has, is under performance verification with the FTC. So they will not use them if they can't do that. They have like a year to respond to that. And it is my understanding, if anybody that has it, like if you look at their website, they're going to say that it's NDA website, like, uh, Exxon has, they're buying back DJI twenty-one, we're heading with their USA.
Okay, very good. I know there are many, many people who do this element.
Okay. Yeah, I think, um, if, if Amy has to revise that to say, um, we approve the chief to purchase this, um, enforcement drone for the amount not to exceed thirteen thousand, seven hundred thirty-six dollars pertaining to the NDA.
Yeah, I think that NDA. Motion is, the motion is contingent on determination of compliance.
Yep, yes. Okay, we're all good with that. Carmen, you have that down? Lisa, any questions on? You're good. Okay, very good. So we have that, um, before us. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, good.
Good, thank you very much. With the contingency, do I need to back the board to show that the NDA is compliant with the draw or how to get back into this?
I would communicate that back to our administrator who can then communicate that back to the board.
So the compliance, complete the purchase. Um, I'll report the compliance back to the board.
Thank you. Thank you, chief, for letting me take your time.
All right, so I'm very, very sure of your reports. Bring so, Jesse, you have any questions?
Absolutely. Um, the first one here specifically listed because we wanted to make sure to cover this item. Our next village board meeting, because of the upcoming April first election, will be, uh, Tuesday, April fifteenth. We will also have finance and personnel that evening as well. Um, just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that and to be on the record with that. It is unique scheduling this time of year because of the, uh, requirements to allow time following an election before your next, uh, meeting of the board. So that will, that is that update. Uh, moving into my, uh, other report here or the rest of my report, rather. Um, maybe I shouldn't say this out loud, but I'll go ahead and chance it. Uh, DPW is wrapping up their winter work such as tree trimming, um, and, and kind of winter-related, um, tasks. They're, they're not changing over the fleet yet. Um, so I want to be clear about that. I don't want to totally jinx us, but, um, they are starting to transition their planning, uh, and efforts towards their spring work program such as stormwater catch basin cleaning, ball diamond maintenance, and, uh, getting a plan of attack for the crack ceiling program. So it's kind of that area of changeover for the public works, but still remaining ready in the event, uh, winter rears its ugly head again. Um, as I mentioned, with the special scheduling of the April village board meeting, um, along those lines, with regards to the election, in-person absentee voting starts tomorrow here at village hall. The clerk's office will be utilizing the committee room to accommodate voter traffic. Last but not least, I wanted to, uh, go through, um, an update that I provided to the village board, uh, via, uh, informational memo uh, last week regarding the village receiving a distinguished budget presentation award from the Government Finance Officers Association. Um, well, this is the thirty-second year in a row that Grafton has received a budget award for the preparation and presentation of its annual budget. This is the first time ever we have received that award with distinction. Um, this award is the highest form of recognition in governmental budgeting and its attainment represents a pretty significant achievement for our team on behalf of the village board and the community. To earn the recognition, budget documents must meet program criteria and excel as a policy document, a financial plan, operations guide, and communication tool. Specal, special recognition is only awarded when all three reviewers and independent panel reviews the, on behalf of the Government Finance Officers Association, reviews these municipal budgets that are submitted. That independent panel, all three reviewers must give the highest possible score in any one or several of the particular individual categories. Um, the village of Grafton's twenty twenty-five budget actually receives special recognition in three separate areas. Um, that being strategic goals and strategies, financial policies, and budget process. Staff, while this is very impressive to receive that high score in multiple criteria, staff is most proud of the fact of the budget process score. Twenty twenty-four saw a completely revamped budget process from start to finish. And we are very proud of being recognized, uh, for that on behalf of the community. I want to close with a very special thank you to our budget team, Paul Studdahar, Jessica Wolf, Monica Stern, Ashley Voight, and Nicole Aleknavicious for helping to make the twenty twenty-five village budget and this award possible. Thank you very much.
Yeah, just one added thing. I want to thank the village board here because you made that budget process very easy by reading two hundred and seventy-five pages of
True story.
Um, and most of us on, uh, online still are on, uh, electronic. Gathering Place Brewery Company, LLC, eight eleven East Vienna Avenue, Milwaukee Avenue. Self-beer fermented malt beverages and wine at Sahala Ale Works, fifteen oh five Wisconsin Avenue, suite number seventeen. Grafton, Wisconsin, from April first, twenty twenty-five to June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, and the attached application. And Jesse, this is, uh, just to get them through to the, uh, to the licensing in, uh, June and July, correct?
Correct. This is, this is to allow more time for the state, uh, paperwork to be processed and be finalized. This is an extension of, of, an extension that has already been, uh, granted, uh, to Gathering Place Brewing Company for the operation.
Very good. Um, let's look for a motion in a second to bring this to the table for discussion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Well, this side of the board is really active tonight. Appreciate that. So, um, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion on this at all? It would be pretty straightforward. Uh, we're glad to have Sahala Gathering Place, uh, here in place of Sahala. So we'll look for a motion and, uh, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, lastly, but not leastly, uh, people who support a venture here, five hundred ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred eighty dollars and thirty-nine cents. We have a motion from, uh, Mr. Schwartz and, uh, Mr. Miller. Justin, I didn't see anything going back and forth.
No.
No, nothing back and forth. Anything here? Anything at all? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And, very, let's look for a motion to put this board to sleep for another, uh, until April fifteenth, with the members or, uh, coming on board. Uh, all in favor, say, or I'll need a motion in a second.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Very good. Side of that board is working hard. All right, motion. Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Lisa, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thanks so much, Jesse.